Set your fees sign in and if you're student, there are signed in sheets up here in the front. There's also a few signed in sheets at the back. We're getting settled up here will begin in about 2 minutes or so. One, good evening and welcome to the Saly School Town Hall Cluster Part 2. And we thank you so much for being here tonight and joining us. We have some students in present here today. We do have some community members that are here. We have representatives from different school PTAs. We also have our key management that are here. So we'd also like to thank for hosting school. Thank you Maranas High School for hosting us today. Online, we have about 140 plus virtual participants. So we do thank them as well for joining us. We do want to ask that again, similar to round one, that all your questions be held till the end to the Q&amp;A question portion of the presentation. We feel that during the presentation, your questions might be asked. But if not, we're answering. And if not, then you can ask them during the Q&amp;A. Other than that, I'd like to ask the Commissioner to begin his presentation.
Before I begin, everyone, before we begin, I just want to invite our Chairman of the Board of Education to come up and say a few words. And then we'll roll into the nitty gritty of what we're here for this evening.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening to the viewing audience online. Thank you to Commissioner Macho and his team for round two of these town hall meetings across our three islands. And I'm just here for moral support and also to answer any questions that you all might have that are directly for the board. But I just wanted to emphasize to you all here tonight that we're in sync with Commissioner and our principal, the key management team and the rest of our test community in asserting the priorities for education and also cognizant again of the fact that the CNMI is undergoing a very challenging time. And so we just want to be considerate of that. But at the same time, know that, you know, there are obligations to the public school system and the Board of Education is following what's taking place at the administration and the legislature very closely so that we can really act appropriately and continue to provide the services through PSS to all of our students. So I'll be here hanging out with Ferri on the side and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have specifically for myself as a member of the State Board of Education. And thank you again and welcome.
Thank you, sir. Take one of the applause for our Chairman, who I am so grateful for when they are in the situation where we really have to be working hard to ensure that we continue our mission. And our mission is to provide quality education to all those in our public school system. And so it is great that we have that support from the Chairman and the Board of Education. And equally important and equally great is all the wonderful individuals that have come tonight, this evening, to listen to what we have to report on, which is a very important, in this very critical situation we find ourselves in, in this very critical time that we are operating in, in the history of our CNMI. It is important to engage with our community and listen to the voices that are out there. But at the same time, also reporting to what is really the real deal on the ground. And because I, as I've always said and I'm persistent when I say this, it is never personal until it becomes real. And when it becomes real, then we start to feel the pain. And I'm not a negative person, but I just want to be real when it comes to where we are in the moment in time where we find ourselves. And we have to be at that stage. We cannot, you know, be not transparent. We have to be transparent. I'm very positive. So in this sense of positivity, I just want to say thank you for being here. And we continue to have hope and move on with the direction of where we want to take our school system into. The first round, I reported to the community in all three islands, Saly, Tanyan and Rota, that we were at a point where we submitted a budget of a certain amount, which was 49 at the time. We were hoping to get what was submitted by the central government, by the late Governor Otto Palastir, supported by the current Governor Apetin on that $40 million budget because of the situation we find ourselves in. I and the board believe that we're never going to get the 49, but at least we've worked towards 40. And now we're here to report to you and we were very concerned that we may not get the 40 and lesser number. And when it comes to that lesser number, as I reported, it'll be setting us backwards perhaps. But we're going to live with what we have because that's just the situation. As already alluded to, the economy is not that great and therefore we should also kind of roll up our sleeves and hunker down. The problem we have is the, what I'm about to present to you in numbers. Next slide. So again, what I reported last time, we reported on the proficiency rating and the wonderful things, the beautiful thing that's happening in our public school system where the kids crying and improving in the proficiency of reading and math and all those subjects that they had born on across the system. That is great. We can see that improvement. That means that there's been a lot of time, effort, energy, quality resourcing that has been put in and invested into our system. We are at that stage. Now, what we need to do is we need to be very protective of that, right? With the accreditation and all that. And I'll start off by saying that accreditation is going to be okay for the public school system. We got the communication with our accredited body and just recently, and we were reassured that accreditation is going to be okay despite the fact that we're in this financial crisis and this flip that we're in. Now, having said that, we're here to report to you that we now have a budget that has been signed into law, right? Or a bill that's been signed into law. And our budget of creation is such. It is 24.6. Every time I try to do this, everybody keeps trying to kind of cut this so that we can improve them coming in. But next slide. Okay, so here's the public law that was signed in, you know, the bill that was signed into law. And we have in front of us, that we've been operating that for a few days, since the beginning of October, 31.7, 7 million and some odd dollars, right? So 31.7 is the appropriations that we received. And we're grateful for everything of that appropriation because we needed a budget to start with. And so the board supported and said, "You move on and then we'll meet with the board next week and the board will approve our revised budget." Because what we submitted to the board before the summer in order to prepare for the opening of our school calendar, yeah, school calendar year, school year, we had to have a budget that we proposed to the board. So they got all this to do that. Now we have to come back and revise that based on the appropriation that we received on the ground. On the ground, it says that also in this budget law, that there are some stipulations that came with it. "No budget cuts or sturdy measures shall be applied to teacher salaries, instructional positions, essential student support programs until non-instructional administrative cost reductions have been exhausted." Point well taken. We got a marching order number one. Number two, next slide. So the other one is 96% of all PSS funds must be allocated to instructional expenditures, which means primarily make sure that the budget of 31.7 is really backed on the 20 schools before all the other expenditures are here outside of the instructional side of things. Next slide. Okay, and on top of 31.7, a earmark with four without dollars is to be set aside for student applications and inner island commutes. On top of that, next slide. There's another $100,000 earmark out of that, 31.7, that needs to be set aside for incentives for teacher support and such. Next slide. So the marching order is as such. The other thing in the stipulation that felt to put on there is that PSS is no longer, there's that law of 180 instructional days for the year that we had to meet. Now there's an extension to that, this law that says we are cutted from that statute, right? That law. So it's okay to go below 180 days. But not to the detriment, we are working on to ensure that we reduce, when we do reduce number of days based on this budget, we are not reducing it down to the detriment of so much of learning is to be lost. Okay, so we're going to be very protective of... This mic is just... Okay, so what we have in front of us is 31.7. And so what do we do when we get that, right? We got a mission. The mission is to operate 20 schools. And here's your stipulation. Here are the charges that you have to use this money with, right? And so we think, I'm a very good, I'm a person who takes directions really hard, right? Like instructions, yes, give me that. As an old soldier, I want to make sure that I understand the mission, understand what I have to do with this, resourcing, and then drive on with that mission. So the first step is, okay, so we have to make sure that we do not touch the schools or 20 schools when it comes to austerity measures. Like we will not implement any austerity measures in any of our schools yet until we implemented the non-instructional side of things, which is pretty simple at us. So what does that mean to me, right? What does that mean to us? How much is it to then operate the schools? 20 schools, we're just personnel alone. And what we did then, because of that 96% that we were supposed to make sure we allocate the budget to for instructional services, we took the Office of Public Transportation, which is really part of Central Office, but now they're part of the schools in terms of instructional support because we cannot run schools without the ones in the office, right? So we took that number down to where the schools are at. Then we took the principals who really fall below the Commissioner in the slapping pattern and we tucked them in under there. But that's what it will cost to just run schools right there. It's 37.6. Okay, so we have a budget of 31.7 minus 500,000, so it's 31.2, right? Johnny, my math correct? But then we have a problem here because 31, 37.6 is what we need for the schools. And then to really have quality control and quality assurance for the schools, we need to have at least 4.5. As it says right there, all the folks that are left in the central office equates down to 4.5 million dollars for just personnel. And so the total 42 is really kind of maxing what we submitted initially when we submitted our budget in pro in through the summer. So for all others though, for the schools to be operating like with, you know, utilities and all the other expenditures that happen down in the schools for operations, is we're going to need 6.1 in addition to the 37 that we need for just personnel. So as you can see, we have a deficit, as it says right there, of 16 million dollars. So that's a problem, right? Next slide. Okay, so we said, okay, so with 31.7, with all those stipulations, here's what we're going to have to do. Let's say that if we do work, right now we're working at 80 hours per pay period for all of our employees. Everything is running, the 180 day calendar is still running, right? It should be running. And so what we have to make a decision to when to start implementing austerity measures. And then my report to you tonight is to tell you where those austerity measures are. And then my report to you tonight is to tell you where those austerity measures are gonna be implemented in, inside of our organization. So it's sixteen million dollars. So we tried this. Let's say all the central office personnel goes sixty-four hours per pay period. That takes away quite a chunk, right? So now it goes from four point five to three point nine is the cost of running central office. But still not enough. Next slide. When I ask John to come up here now and start helping me out with the other numbers here, but... So our budget request for all others has been six point eight. We reduced it down first try, when we were hopeful of at least a point million dollar budget, to six point one. Now with the thirty-one point seven, let's try another way to reduce this operational cost and see where the money could be from there. And we've reduced it down to five point nine. John will go ahead and kind of describe the details of each line item in this particular budgeting for just operations.
Thank you Commissioner Tito Mayafide. Uh, I'm Jonathan Noggin, the Director of Finance for PSS. Uh, here to support Commissioner. So in this effort, right, trying to recharge of the mission to reduce costs to make the budget work, right? Because we are, if we're given an appropriation, uh, we have to find our ways, any way possible to, um, trim in our operational costs so that we can still operate the system. So the first one is central office. Seeing how we can reduce costs, so I want to take you through each column there. So the first column is the budget request. So that's what we submitted to the legislature for our budget, asking for PSS operations at three hundred and five thousand dollars. And that is to pay for operational needs such as cleaning, supplies, um, and you know, those types of expenditures. Uh, so given that we were notified that it's going to be a budget reduction, uh, we reduced it down by more than fifty percent down to a hundred and fifty thousand for central office. And then, uh, given that we're also still finding ways to cut, uh, meeting with all of our key managers, uh, we decided to, or found ways to reduce again for central office down to a hundred and thirty thousand. So that is supporting, uh, all offices at the central level across the district. Um, and then after that, because the savings is still not enough, let's see how else can we reduce costs. We looked at the school level. Uh, and of course, making this decision is not likely involve every single school principal to see how we can reduce costs, but of course not other detriment, uh, to, to our schools in terms of operations. So again, school operations, the second line, it costs, uh, or it covers supplies, cleaning supplies, cleaning services, janitorial, um, grass cutting, security services for schools to have, uh, security services. So that's operational cost. Uh, and we're, we had initial budget submission of one point three billion because it does cost, um, quite a bit for our schools to run every single day, right? Uh, because we need that for our students and our staff. Uh, so the first reduction we had in our operational cost for schools, reduce it down to nine hundred thousand. And then again, in our, uh, meeting with our school leaders, having them pretty look at their budget and trim again, um, down to eight hundred thousand. So that also is a huge reduction that they're willing to take. Uh, also keeping in mind the necessities that they need to uphold for daily school operations. The third line, we see there are all others programs. That's how much we have to contribute as PSS for some of our federal grants. So not all grants are one hundred percent, uh, federal, uh, that we just receive the federal, uh, dollars. We also, for some of them, have to contribute also for these programs. Uh, so we, it's called a local match or where we use our government, our local government dollars to operate uh, or to receive those funds. And we need to set aside one point seven at this time. Uh, and that's for various grants such as special education and head start. And we need those programs. So for us to have those programs, we need to make sure we contribute to, uh, to those grants. So we can't reduce that. Number two, or the fourth line, instructional materials. We do need to set aside in our budget, uh, three hundred and seventeen thousand, uh, for, um, instructional materials. So those are for like textbooks and core instructional supplies. So not like notebooks and pens, that's, it's something else. So we need to use our local dollars. It's a CMI law. We have to set aside one percent of our total budget for instructional materials. So we set that aside for that because of course we need to comply. We cannot reduce instructional materials. Utilities, that's the other line that's highlighted there. That's what we pay for power, water, sewer. Uh, originally, it, or historically, it cost PSS three million dollars in utilities, right? Water, electrical, sewer, most of it is electrical. Uh, but as many of you know, we have solar panels now installed in, uh, most of our schools. And the, the savings from solar has brought down our, um, utility costs from three million typical costs down to two million, uh, which is really good. But we, even though we are saving because of solar, uh, we are still also paying for power. So whenever we, uh, because with solar, um, we pay based on production, how much we, we produce electricity based on the sunlight. But if there is no sunlight, then we have to use CUC because we're not running on solar. So like today, uh, although it was sunny most of the day, uh, for the last few days, it's been overcast, quite cloudy. So we're probably not using solar, we're using CUC, which is a lot more expensive versus solar. So we, we are looking at, uh, two million dollars in, um, utilities costs. But with some conservation, it can go down to one point nine. And then now we're also, given we have the energy conservation initiative with all schools and offices, uh, with, uh, of course, some limits to AC. And we, we know that we understand we can get uncomfortable when there's no AC running in the classroom. Uh, but you know, we're hoping that's going to yield even more savings down to one point eight or even lower. Uh, and of course, we're also going to be, uh, keeping our, our finger on how much we're spending on electricity because if over time, uh, the savings are sufficient, we can adjust on the, um, the time for AC. But also still focusing on energy conservation.
Yeah, can I say something about that? So the thing is, we have no intentions to not have ACs running in our classroom space. The directive was for every day that the AC runs, just run it for five hours, as much as you can. That changes mindset, right? So there's, I did not say to the schools, this is when you turn it on and this is when you turn it off. You're empowered to run your facility, your ACs to the comfort level of our students. You can figure it out, okay? You have that power. Uh, so, but reducing it down from, we turn it on whenever we want to turn it on, up until whenever we want to turn it off, uh, is not gonna work anymore. This is a critical time in our budget and we don't have the luxury of living the way we've been living the last couple of years. So we have to change our mindset. This is the purpose of that. But what I asked John to do is estimate based on what we know, the expenditure is, or you can, every school, as we can see, everyone, pay the bills. Uh, we can see the change and the savings in our solar panels and all that. How much more can we squeeze this operation of running, you know, our operations by means of the utilities that we're having? Uh, see how we can estimate it another hundred thousand. So we'll see in the next couple of months. In one or two, we'll come back and probably be adjusted, uh, directive to, uh, inform schools to make adjustment when it comes to the... Air industry, but that is a big consumer of the electricity that we have, right? A big part of our bills. So, um, we're doing everything we can against what we're trying to say. Here, next slide.
Oh, sorry Commissioner, before we move on to the next slide. I did want to just, uh, point out, uh, those highlighted items, the central operations, school operations and utilities, those items are highlighted because that's something that we can control in terms of reduction. But the other items, uh, we cannot reduce. Uh, we have obligations to contracts that we cannot reduce because we are, we have signing obligated PSS for, uh, those services. And also, as the Commissioner mentioned earlier, we have those earmarks, those set asides for the student competition, commutes and teacher incentives. Because it's in the budget law, we have to set aside those funds. We cannot reduce it because, you know, we want to, we have to set those funds aside. But instead, we can't control how much power we consume. We can't control how much water we consume and things like that. But we're gonna be scrutinizing those usages so that we are using our resources as efficiently as possible.
We started out the conversation with the numbers evening by really articulating to you that personnel is where the numbers really matter, right? That's where a big portion of, the greatest portion of our budget goes to. And I was thinking about, over time, you know, personnel will continue to rise in terms of the, um, the quality of our teachers, for example. Because as they get their licensure, uh, and certification, their salaries become adjusted, right? And so those things, as you get adjusted in salary over the years, the hundreds of quality teachers that were not highly qualified teachers now highly qualified teachers to really kind of be performing and demonstrating and really kind of conducting the classes, it's gonna cost. So that's where a lot of the increase in the personnel is, uh, in addition to obviously hiring more people to make sure that, you know, we have enough folks to, to staff the eight thousand or so students that we have in our school district. Okay, so that's where, and John, uh, central operations, we managed to cut it down from three oh five to one thirty, which is, I think you said fifty-seven percent and a reduction.
Yes.
And then the, uh, school operations from thirty, one point three to eight hundred, which is about forty-seven.
Forty-something percent.
So forty-something percent. So again, changing mindset, different times. Uh, again, we still look to the detriment, so much to the loss of learning, but we really gonna want to make sure we protect that. But at the same time, we have to change the way we operate, right? So becoming more global in the way our operations are. And just very fortunate to have John and our team here to kind of help, kind of navigate, help us navigate through this. Next slide. Okay, John, you can go ahead and, uh, you know, explain this particular slide here.
All right, so those operational cost reductions, we know are not enough. So how else can we reduce? The budget law says we have to exhaust all non-instructional administrative, uh, cost reductions first, which I think is a good starting point, right? Uh, we need to focus on protecting our schools. So at central office, uh, it normally costs the, the system four million to operate. Uh, and of course, we, we keep updating our numbers as time goes by because as people separate or get hired, the numbers move. Uh, so that's four million for central to operate. Uh, one of the big decisions that we're, we're making right now, um, at the management level is having furloughs, um, up at the district, up at central office. Because as the Commissioner mentioned earlier, personnel cost is the majority of PSS operational cost. So, uh, we'll have to make those hard sacrifices so that we don't sacrifice at the school level. So we've been identifying folks, uh, who will have to be, um, furloughed, uh, for whatever time in this school year as the budget is insufficient. We're looking to save, um, hoping about a million dollars due to the central office furlough. And then for everyone else to be retained, who was going to be working, they'll be working at a sixty-four hour bi-weekly schedule. That means there'll be, uh, in every week, there's going to be one unpaid day. Uh, so just looking at that, we're looking to save, uh, just with central office cost reduction at one point four million. So the gap is still big as the Commissioner, I'll show you one of the earlier slides. How can, how else can we add this? We looked at some of the initiatives that were released earlier, right? One is a travel suspension. Uh, so travel suspension to reduce costs. Uh, certification freeze, as the Commissioner mentioned earlier. We, uh, for all our instructional staff, for teachers, our variance counselors, we need all of them to be certified, right? They need to have a valid license, uh, for them to practice. One, which is important for our federal grants. And two, two, it's a measure of, um, high quality in terms of instructional services. But that also comes at a cost for PSS. Uh, because really, at the end of the day, the, these are professionals working with our students every day. Uh, and, and it does, we do need to compensate them based on their potential. Uh, but in order for the personnel costs to not keep increasing, because as we, uh, retain our teaching staff and they get higher certification, higher degrees, there are adjustments for them. Uh, because that's just, that's part of our compensation plan. We need to freeze those adjustments, uh, so that we don't continue to increase our personnel cost. And I know for some of our teachers who are here today or who may get this information, they may think, I'm working on my masters right now, uh, I'm supposed to receive a pay increase. I've been looking forward to that pay increase because it's costing me more like dollars out of my pocket to pursue higher education. And of course, when teachers pursue higher education, that should yield a higher quality teaching for the students. But unfortunately, that's a cost that, uh, is more and more difficult for us to bear. So we'll have to freeze at this point. Of course, it's not yet frozen, uh, but that's one of our recommendations. Substitute teachers, we have, uh, about fifty substitute teachers onboard. Uh, and unfortunately, uh, because they are not full-time employees, we'll have to reduce the number of substitute teachers only to retain those who are, uh, long-term serving in classrooms. There are some classes where a teacher is out for a long period of time, such as a medical leave. We cannot have those students unattended. So substitute teacher will have to stand, uh, second, third place. Those substitute teachers are to be retained. All other substitute teachers who are on call or roaming, uh, in the, on those days where there's multiple teachers out, those substitute teachers unfortunately, uh, will have to be on the furlough as well.
So John, we initially budgeted, I think, a million point three, uh, on for substitute teachers for all fifty plus.
Yes.
We narrowed it down to twenty-five. So now we're, we reduced our budgeting for just substitute teachers to, as you can see here, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
Yes, so that does yield savings for, for PSS. And then as we mentioned earlier, uh, due to our, um, energy or utilities, some conservation initiatives, we plan to save there. So, uh, all in all, with, uh, the other cost reduction measures, we're looking at saving one point seven million.
John, and vacant and frozen positions, or smashed frozen positions. So we have a lot of vacancies. Right now, we're, that, uh, the forty-two million dollar personnel cost that we have onboard, we budget for, uh, is really for nine hundred and seventy plus FTEs, right? Full-time employees. Uh, the other two to three hundred employees that we have in the school system are federally funded. But nobody funding for by forty-two million dollars are nine hundred and seventy-one. There are some vacancies that are occurring, some positions that are needed to be open based on, you know, conversations with principals and all that. Uh, we're gonna not hire and board these vacant positions and not try to open up any more, uh, any more vacant positions up to our budget is five hundred and seven. You know, free when it comes to what we really would be getting, okay? Slide. Okay, John, so here we have the school central office, uh, personnel is forty-two, uh, for eighty hours. Uh, we did a scenario where, again, as mentioned earlier, eighty hours for all schools, sixty-four for central. We're down still at sixty million dollar shortfall. And then John will explain the last scenario with sixty-four hours, uh, for even the school's central office with furlough in central office. Go ahead.
All right, so as we look at these scenarios, um, well, it generally costs PSS funding every single day, paying all red boys about forty, forty-eight million dollars. If we just reduce central office to sixty-four hours, keep in mind that central office, it's not as many people working at the district, uh, paying out of our local funds, uh, it doesn't really make a dent in the overall budget. So we ran the scenario, what if every single employee of PSS will be, uh, working on that sixty-four hour work schedule, which means one day per week will be unpaid? What would that look like, right? Not necessarily we're going to implement it tomorrow. Looking at that scenario, it reduces personal cost to thirty-four million. And then when you factor in the all other expenses, it reduces personal cost to forty, also operational cost to forty million, down from the forty-eight. So that scenario seems more viable for PSS. But of course, we have to make those, that kind of reduction even at the school level.
So thirty-one point seven or thirty-one point two already wanna see that budget appropriation is concerned, right? And we did discuss this in the first round of our compost. That is a bit concerning. So when the governor signed the bill into law, it was the very next day, chair, my... So when, uh, the governor signed the bill into law, it was very nice day, chair, myself, and the team went over, visited, paid a visit to the governor's office to discuss this matter with him and his, uh, uh, budget folks. And, uh, we told him what thirty-one point seven means to us here in the public school system, which is really what we just presented to you tonight, or what we presented to you tonight. In that discussion, there was a, um, part of the conversation was that there will be a revised budget to be submitted by the governor this week. It was supposed to be one day, uh, but now we're hearing that there's a meeting that occurred today with, uh, the Public Mass, uh, Trust. And, uh, after that, hopefully, a budget will be submitted, a revised budget will be submitted. And, uh, we're hoping that the revised budget will get us a base, that now deficit that we narrowed it down to, which is seven million, if we get permission from the board to implement this plan starting on November first. If we don't get close to thirty-nine or up to forty, either thirty-seven will probably work a little bit, obviously a lot better than thirty-one. Um, then we're gonna, and I'm already starting this exercise with the principals. We're sitting down and we're trying to find who then in the schools will be furloughed. Because remember the law said you would exhaust first everywhere else that is not instructional until you can then start implementing our street measures and instructional side things. And that's exactly what we're doing. So we're gonna have to find out how we can then narrow it down just in case. But if we do get that, at least thirty-seven to forty million dollars, we're gonna be just fine and maybe not have to furlough anyone in the schools. So that's what this, uh, really, uh, the sole want in this particular part of the presentations is really just that. Either we stay at thirty-one point five and, uh, then reach down to the schools for furloughing, or we get a little bit more and we don't have to do that, but we still have to go six hours across the board. Because that's really a lot of the budgeting that would come back to make sure that thirty-one or at least thirty-seven would work, right? Now, everyone here is saying, um, well, okay, sixty-four hours. And in the first round, I said sixty-four hours would be two days out of the week, I mean, one day out of every week, uh, there would be those school, right, which reduces our school days from a hundred and eighty down to a hundred and fifty some, to a hundred and sixty days. Uh, we're, we're doing everything we can to also even protect them. So we're gonna declare perhaps, hopefully, uh, that there will be no schools on Monday or half-days on Mondays every week. And then we will find ways to have, uh, pay differential to the instructional staff to still come back on those days and allow the schools to be open. What that means is that if we declare that there will be no schools on those days every week, there's that loss of learning. When there's loss of learning, we can go and we're actually asking the federal, uh, grants right now, the grant tours, to allow us to use some of that federal funds that we have to supplement so that the loss of learning does not go further than what we, we're going to be going into. Does that make sense? So therefore then, it gives back to the instructional staff where their hours are reduced by sixty-four, or down to sixty-four by sixteen uh, hours per pay period, but still are allowed to come back and teach for a flat rate of a pay differential for teaching for, you know, over six hours maybe. Okay, and we'll get into the details with, uh, the, uh, instructional staff who will be affected by, by all that when it comes down for, uh, for that, uh, conversation. But right now, that's really the plan, and that's the only way I think we could save, not reducing any more of our instructional days, but at the same time, finding creative ways of getting permission to supplement that, uh, anticipate also when, which initially was the biggest concern we had, uh, coming into this budget season and knowing the anticipate what we're gonna have. So I say all that to say that, you know, it's, it's rough and it's hard, it's challenging. We're gonna do it, that's what we do in PSS, right? And with the board's guidance, we're gonna try and make it however we could make it work for that so that we can continue to, uh, provide a quality education. But just at a very big impact and sacrifice that we'll have to make. So next slide? So plans for financial, uh, stability, a lot of the folks during our talkroom meetings have been saying, oh, well, you know, we find ourselves in this situation every year, what are we doing, what are we gonna be doing from here on? Lots of lessons have been learned and we're obviously going to start changing things around and, uh, working with the board and our key man explain. And all of our administrators in the schools, we're gonna start to re, kinda buckle down and, uh, make changes and implement new changes that will hopefully, uh, ensure that we are not to the point where we find ourselves here today, hopefully in the future years. But one of the big things that I really kind of always excited to, to talk about is this grant that we had federally funded, uh, five million dollars or four plus million dollars that we were granted last year, we're in year two, to look at all of our facilities, right, and look at all the vulnerabilities that are going on in our facilities and be able to measure and assess that so that we know and we have an anticipation for when we need to spend money in those, right, to continue the maintenance of the facility so that we're supposed to continue to be safe and, and operational. We don't have currently the local funding for that stuff, but we're gonna use the federal funds to allow us to have that, right? So we're gonna have, that's actually ongoing right now, the vulnerability assessments of all of our buildings across all of the internal public school system now. The other one too that with that grant is that we're able to then buy this very expensive software called Fieldmakings Management Software, uh, that allows us to be more effective and efficient in the way we operate and, and providing the maintenance help and assistance that our schools need. Right now, I can say that all of our student administrators have been trained on this software, they've been trained and they've been informed on this particular grant so that we can work together, making sure that our schools remain safe. What does that do to us in the future? That means it allows us to, I call it deferred maintenance, right? We, we don't put it in the budget, we don't ask for money for it because we at least have a good, uh, vision about what it's gonna really cost, not just likely to say this is what we need for maintenance across the board, right? So that's really the bottom line of that, uh, particular initiative, and we're happy to do that. Um, and there are other, uh, creative ways, like the cafeteria, yeah, the utilities that are extended for every cafeteria right now is being paid for by the child nutrition program, um, the food service program, right? So we're, we're looking at how much cafeterias are extending in terms of utilities that we're making sure that we're tapping into the federal funds to pay for the utilities because it's allowable in that particular grant. Uh, and then there are other, Central Office for sure will be reorganized, so look forward to us reporting to the board on what that's gonna look like, we're working hand in hand with, in parallel with the board on what we're envisioning, uh, that could be. But, uh, when we reorganize, we're gonna be more effective and obviously we'll find ourselves in a very, uh, as perceived, a loaded fashion across the Central Office, but we will get that reorganization done. Uh, rightsizing, John, you can talk about, John is a former principal by the way, and so, uh, he's very helpful in making us also understand the life down at that, that level, right, at the one thousand feet level of what's going on in the, in the schools, right? And, uh, be able to kind of give good advice when it comes to financial, but let's talk about the, uh, analysis that you did with the rightsizing on base of enrollment.
Yes, so one of the initiatives that we did to, uh, make our way towards, uh, more, uh, financial stability of the system, and really at the end of the day, as you mentioned, it's personnel. So how do we maximize our personnel that's responsive to, uh, the enrollment needs of our schools? Because we are seeing that downward trend in enrollment for every single school, or just about every school. I mentioned it's still a pretty high steady enrollment, I'm not sure what's happening here, oh, but he's still the principal at this school, by the way. So, uh, looking at school enrollment and, uh, looking at trying to maximize ways that, you know, like we, we look at the, there's a board regulation for student to teacher ratio, how many students can be enrolled in a single classroom with a teacher? Uh, so rather than having classroom sizes of, let's say, twenty, or, um, you have around that number when, in the, the high school, the max should be thirty, find ways to leverage to combine classes as needed, uh, consolidate and shift, uh, staff around as necessary, uh, so that we, um, the staffing size of the school is responsive to the, or reflects the enrollment. And then, uh, in that as well, as we move forward from school year over school year, uh, make adjustments such as shifts. If we see enrollment shifts, uh, from school to school, we will shift our resources rather than, um, hiring more teachers to fill in a school that has increasing enrollment. We shift from a school that's decreasing in enrollment to that other school so we don't continue to incur, um, higher operational costs. So that is an approach, uh, that's the kind of approach that we're going to be, uh, going towards in the future.
First, I mean, the analysis, an example that I always kind of think about is, um, let's say, and then there's nothing against photography class, but, uh, let's say there's a photography class in high school, right, and the enrollment in one school is five and the other school uh, offers photography class too as an elective, but maybe the enrollment is also five. But then there's a need for that one school that has one enrollment for five, uh, who is also a teacher teaching photography class. This is, uh, Torres, you're gonna teach photography class, you're fine. Let's say that one teacher who teaches photography class also happens to teach math, right? Uh, for some reason, but that school needs a math teacher, but that's, the teacher's too busy teaching photography class in school others. And that other school that needs also a photography class only has an enrollment of five. But that other teacher there who's teaching photography is not a math teacher, they don't need a math teacher there at our school. So what we can do is make that photography class an online class taught by one of the other teachers in the other school where they don't need a, a math teacher and then open up the position for a math teacher and allow that position to be filled by a teacher who is teaching photography class, but can also teach math. That makes sense, so. And that's a, kind of like, uh, it's a, it's a science or it's, we call it battlefield, uh, geometry or, you know, uh, uh, trigonometry, but it is that, that level where we have to kind of continue to look into when it comes to the analysis of our enrollment.
And the commissioner, if I may, I'm gonna remove the finance hat and put on your school hat.
No, you would not.
Sorry, but I also understand at the school level, when we, uh, maximize that capacity per teacher, let's say the max thirty, thirty, thirty per teacher, I'm speaking like on the high school side, that also comes at a detriment to the, the type of instructional services a teacher can provide for the class. Because you're stretching the teacher, uh, towards their capacity, right? Uh, but you know, that's where we have to look at at both ends. When we maximize all classes like that, uh, it comes at that, I guess, sacrifice it away for the teacher to be, uh, as, um, efficient as possible, effective as possible for the students. So of course, we have to maximize or utilize our resources properly, but in general performance, mental health, right now, we, we know, we understand that it's, it's a ramification of that kind of initiative.
This is the reason why, uh, central office level and our post-central offices, we will never work in a vacuum or we will never work where the principals are working in a vacuum in the schools. There's always this collaboration and communication and, uh, ensuring that, uh, what decisions we're anticipating of making up at Central Office, the folks down in the schools are also part of the decision-making process. And so I can assure the community in that would always continue where there's that, um, connection. Um, so that's very important, we're not gonna be disconnected. That's why I'm also very protective when it comes to like, how far do you reduce Central Office to? We, I'm, I'm very careful with when it comes to that because the quality control and the quality issues that needs to occur is being looked at by our accrediting body and accountability at that, right? So most school is gonna be out there independently trying to get accreditation on their own. There's gonna, has to be this connection with the district and the state level. Uh, and so we're always striving towards getting a district level accreditation and not just, uh, by school, which some districts do that, but in this district, this fiscal district, um, and I know the board supports you on this, we gotta make sure we're accredited, because if one student gets out of zone and needs to be enrolled in another school, the same standard of qual- and quality of education should be at every school, right? So the parents, the community don't need to worry about moving their child from one school to the other because of the accreditation issue, it's an accredited district and the same standards are uniform across the board. Okay, so we're gonna try to install more solar panels as well. There's a lot of communities across our school district that don't have the solar panels, but we know how much we're saving. And, uh, there's a radio, uh, an advantage to making sure that we have solar panels in our. So we'll work with, uh, the board again, I wanna make sure we continue on with that initiative. There are also people who have called in and, um, uh, chatted in and some emailed and contacted us saying, hey, we wanna help, we wanna fundraise for PSS. Uh, we're looking at those folks and we're, we're listening to their plans as well. And in fact, one of them is gonna be presenting to our board, uh, at the board meeting this week uh, on the plans that, uh, that individual has for, for fundraising for PSS. But along the same line, in fact, uh, while simultaneously doing that, we're also going to, uh, continue to work on this initiative of establishing a foundation, a downward foundation for PSS just to have a place where donors can get into. Speaking of donors, we're gonna see how we can also be very good at, um, reaching out to, uh, potential philanthropic, uh, individuals or organizations out there foundations outside of the Commonwealth to see how they can help our public schools, so. Um, just wanna, before I go on to the next slide, just, uh, again to the students, I wanna talk to you and tell you that, uh, if you're a senior now, if you're in high school, you're gonna be just fine with your accreditation. Okay, just wanna make sure that that is confirmed with you and assured to you because that is something that is of a very important, uh, and critical thing that, uh, we from the board and, uh, across our school district wanna make sure we protect. So we did our, our best to contact our creditors, we had a very good, uh, conversation and meeting with them. They were very happy to be reached out early in the season, uh, to inform them of our situation, but at the same time, giving them an opportunity to provide us with guidance on how to protect, uh, the quality, uh, education that we're providing. So when they come here in the mid-cycle review in a couple of years, as our accreditation is going on way up to twenty thirty, in a couple of years when they come to us for our mid-cycle review, we're having this conversation by most of them. We're also securing our mid-cycle review and accreditation and we're protecting that, uh, despite the financial constraints that we find ourselves in, okay? The next slide?
Oh, oh, sorry, I think I just add, uh, commissioner, so in this slide, the commissioner has provided leverage other funding sources. And I think this is one of the big things that a lot of people have been questioning. Why can't you just use your federal funds, right? But we showed one of the, the last scenario, a seven million dollar deficit or a one-eight million dollar deficit. Why can't we just ask the, our grantor to give us because we're struggling? Uh, but I know that our federal programs office has been keeping the Department of Education updated about, uh, the state of PSS, the state of our, our economic prices within the CMI, so they, they understand and really there are restrictions with the funds. Uh, so with, with us, with PSS reducing down to sixty-four hours, reducing instructional days, that is not creating a violation for the Department of Education in terms of compliant number of days, but if we're going to be shifting funds and using them for unintended purposes such as completely, uh, paying for personnel, that is a problem. So of course, we've been asking ways, how can we use our funds to, to, uh, uh, protect school, uh, or protect our instruction for our students? That's why the commissioner gave a preview of, uh, one ongoing proposal that is, uh, hopefully we get approval, which is to offer a, uh, kind of like a supplemental enrichment day on Mondays for students and for, of course, the teachers to be, uh, working on those days, those who, um, have like a program to run on those austerity Mondays. Uh, but then they cannot, we cannot use our federal funds to pay for all the other days. The burden of public education does lie within the state or within our local government. So it's, it's not as easy as asking for that big check so that we can bridge that gap in our deficit or the shortfall. Because a lot of folks have also reached out to me as well, saying, their sponsor just asked, they're gonna give it to you. But the, they have not just been saying, yes, we understand. The, I think the entire nation is going through this kind of struggle with even the Department of Education being downsized by more than fifty percent. So it's, the federal government is also still in shutdown right now, so it's, it's tough times.
Okay, good, so since you mentioned the federal government shutdown, uh, just to assure, we're assuring the community, the board, that, um, our cafeterias will continue to run because we have that funding, uh, in place, intact. Our, um, special education program will continue to run, our head start program will continue to run, the insubordinate grant, and all the programs under DTA will continue on, uh, despite the will continue on despite the damage, well, the federal shutdown, because we've already been communicating with our federal partners on how that would affect us when they are not answering phone calls and all that. So, we're gonna be okay so far. We'll announce if there's any detriment to any of that they want to know. Hopefully not. Slide? Okay, yeah, so at this point, we decided to give the community the expectation of what is gonna happen next, right? So, right now, the calendar is continuing on just as we introduced it in the beginning of the school year. However, after this month of October, we're gonna have to implement austerity measures. Because we cannot afford to continue working any hour pay period for a big size of personnel that's the big size that we have in our operation. So, we're presenting to the board next week this plan. For now, because this is what is in front of us. And if there's a revised budget, then we'll just fire it. But certainly need the board to empower me and our team and PSS to kind of work and proceed with this, right? No GAN somehow. Okay, but so, no furlough of school staff until the end of October. If, hopefully, there's a revised budget. If there's no revised budget, then obviously we're gonna implement some sort of furloughs at the school level as well. Next slide? And of course, you know, we're hoping for that revised budget. But I wanna assure, this came up in another town hall meeting. Because that's the first round of town halls, we cannot explain what measures people are gonna take. And a lot of that, a lot of those measures were kind of like, what, not equally qualified teachers, all of them will be cut, the substitute teachers, all of them will not be there, and all of those, right? Things have changed. Because now we have a law that we're gonna have to really kind of comply with and we're doing everything we can to make sure we comply to that law. Still a very challenging situation, but nevertheless, something that has changed since the last reporting. That's why we wanted to go around in this town hall meetings to give another update to where that is. So, no, as you saw, you did not see a bulletin that said Vice Principal of all the, you know, furlough as well, right? None of that appeared here in this presentation, seeing. Because, again, things have changed since then, right? And it's really great working with, I keep looking at my chair, but we're really great working with the Board of Education that works with us hand in hand, because we all understand the constraints and the limitations that we have. And then working with our central government and their assistance as well in communicating with folks across the street to make sure we're also getting the best support we can possibly get based on, you know, the needs that we have. So, next slide? I think that's it. So, a lot of, and also wanna assure the community, a lot of the questions and a lot of the concerns or the comments or the suggestions that you made in the first round and even in the second round of all our town hall meetings have been received well. We have them all documented, we're reporting what they have been. And then we've actually included them in this, you know, adjustment to our plans for implementing austerity measures. So we appreciate all the suggestions and the questions that came up. But at this point in time, we have a hundred and, okay, people online?
One eighty.
We have a hundred and eighty-seven people online and we have a great number of folks here too, present in the cafeterias. So, we'll open up for questions and hopefully we got some good answers for you.
You can raise your hand. If you have a question, you can raise your hand and we'll, um, make my way.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name's Ed Ariola, and I'm president of the MHS PTSA. And I have some of my fellow board and department PTSA members here. So, you know, welcome to MHS, everybody. And we are the largest school, as you know, sixteen hundred some students. And my question is, should you get to the point where you start having to cut? Will the budget cuts be applied equally across all schools based on population or size? You know, considering that MHS does have a very large campus and a very large student population. That's my question.
Yes, thank you for that question. Let's give a big one of applause to that PTA president. Oh, for all his students, his students, yes. Thank you for that question, Sharona. Had this discussion with the principal representatives at the key management level and we're communicating down to the other principals. But rest assured that we will, there will be, in fact, sooner rather than later, be sitting down with the principals at every school to understand their consideration as well for austerity and how they plan on cutting and working with us to kind of understand that number as well. And of course, you know, when the numbers are not to the expected number, we're going to work together to provide some guidance on how to proceed forward with that. But I know that answer to your question came in a long fashion, but yes, rest assured though, we're gonna be, it's not fair for us to just now cookie cut, cuts, I mean, cookie cut across the board. We gotta make sure we understand, because the principals did raise that concern when I started talking about furloughing down at the school level about the decision on who gets to be furloughed. So, one-on-one conversation will occur with every school. Thank you. Next?
Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, one right there?
Hi, my name is Royad Sid. I'm a science educator at Saipan Southern. I have a couple of suggestions. Going forward, well, first, let me address some things from the past, bring this up to date. One of the, one of the, it's scary just saying that. One of the past times that this has occurred in the fifteen years that I've served here, the then-Commissioner noted that the more we cut our electricity use, the higher the charge was from CUC, so the bill never changed. And I'm wondering if that's been factored in here? Because we are the biggest user on island by far.
When it comes to the utilities, all I can report to you right now at this point, the one of the more analysis on it, we don't, how much we're spending, how much A C U C for the electricity that we get off the grid? And then how much we're paying for the company who installed the solar panels that we didn't pay a single dollar for, but are already kind of paying the energy that we get from those solar panels? You'd say sixteen cents versus forty cents per kilowatt hours is what we're at. I don't know what happened, you know, several years ago when that was reported about the more we cut or we turn on our electricity, the more we pay. But at this point in time, all I know is that we pay forty cents per kilowatt hours or we pay sixteen cents. The good thing too about our solar panels is that for the mirrors, our bed mirror, when the energy is gone from those solar panels and we don't turn on our lights or air conditioning on the weekends because we don't have schools, that energy that's drawn from there goes back, goes out to CUC and then CUC has to, you know, sell it to the school. And then we get credit back for that, so that's an awesome thing. So if our bill is a hundred thousand dollars a month with a credit over thirty thousand dollars that they've utilized on our solar panels, then we only pay seventy thousand for that one. So, but, sorry, but I can't directly answer that question because I don't know what happened then when they were staying there, but I can tell you what's going on now.
That's okay, thank you. You actually answered one of my other questions, what happens to the solar output when we're not using it? I'd also like to suggest that we work towards, take some of this federal building funds, sorry, that's the wrong term, but, and look at cost reductions in energy. For example, we have noticed that the classrooms that are under the solar panels are shaded, if you'll allow the term, and they are using less energy. Insulation, huge, there's basically none. Tinting versus tinting the windows versus blocking them with paper and then having to turn on the lights, things like that. So savings, taking some of that money and turning it into long-term savings. So enough on the electricity.
Can I, can I just, uh, sorry to interrupt you, but on that point about, you know, the electricity side of things, during this vulnerability assessment, we'll certainly look at the lighting fixtures that we have, because they're all turned from the current lighting system to a newer LED. There's a lot of things, you know, that I know an institution that I was at at one point, we did that study, we implemented it, and there was a lot of dollars saved just from uniformly just making sure that we commit to that type of lighting. So, thank you. What was it?
That's, that's another good thing. I'm trying to go faster because I know we're only allowed so much time. But the final one is, as a former union person, I know there's no unions out here, but unions are my family way. Back to my grandfather, over a hundred years ago. I'm very worried that austerity is going to be used, I'll just say it, used as a weapon in HR situations against those who are not well-lit, troublemakers, you know, we can phrase it however we want. But what kind of protections are you putting in place to make sure that the austerity situations at all levels, but especially at the personnel level, are equitable and fair?
Very good question. Again, I do not know the individuals that are in that category to be furloughed. And they're just furloughed, by the way. They're not, the boys aren't going to allow me to reduce and enforce, right? Riff, like, it's really just furlough until, furlough means you're given a letter to say, stay home, don't come to work unless we get funding and then we invite you back, but you're still employed. But when it comes down to the category and determining the individuals that will be affected by that and to your point about, you know, the character in all those individuals, that conversations that occur between myself and the supervisors of those individuals that are on this for furlough. Does that answer your question? Okay, clarify some more so we can get to it.
I want assurances that any HR decisions are made fair and equitably across the board. With respect to, of course, to protect these guys, right, gender, which is the proper term, I'm sorry, whatever it is. Gender, race, creed.
We were an organization that, space out from the beginning, you aligned with this organization, right? You stand in your, in your application, you commit to it, you join the organization, and we are committed to that all the way to the end. So, yes, you are assured that we will do it as equitably and as equally as we can possibly make it and do it with, okay? So, yes, thank you. And I know that the pan is being raised, but that's just, at this point, I think, go ahead, we're gonna give you the mic. But at this point, we just felt to, my notes chair said, hey, let's start recognizing our PAC council members that had just been competing last night. You know, can all the PAC members please stand up so we can recognize you at least joining us in this town hall meeting? Here's one right here. Anybody? Ed, Speaker, all of the, can we give a big one of applause to them? Every parent is hard at work to making sure their child is is promoted to school or, you know, transported to school and back home, and they're really kind of caring for these kids. But these folks volunteered their time and effort to really engage with us in our school district and inform us on how to do it better and better each and every day when we are there educating their kids. So, I just wanna make sure that we recognize them, Chair, making sure that they're also acknowledged for their hard work. So we thank you for that. But at this point in time, we have one of our PAC officers who has a question.
Good evening, so, Grace Happy, I'm the PTSA president for the PAC meeting at high school. So my question is, and I think it's just to add to this gentleman's question. And he also talked about, or I asked, I asked it, you know, last night in the PAC meeting. And so, have certain developments in the criteria or furlough?
We're working on development of those criteria for furlough with the principals. Because right now, we have determined the individuals who are gonna be furloughed at central office as an initial step. But that's with working with the supervisors at central office. The more sensitive, delicate part of this is really now the instructional staff, right? And the functioning of the school, so, very considerate, very sensitive to that. And we will not just arbitrarily make our own criteria at central office and then give it out to the principals and then let them then figure out how to do that. We're gonna sit down and we're gonna develop the criteria together and uniformly we'll work selecting who will be furloughed. The point, because the mission at the end of the day is to still run the school to that standard that we expect it to be, right? Again, not to the detriment of the laws of learning or to continue on with the laws of learning. We're gonna anticipate some of that, but not do that anymore further than where we can reach. Okay, so, but I hope that answered your question?
Uh, yes.
I almost said I forgot what you asked me last night, right? Because it's been four hours. Go ahead.
Um, okay, so my next question is more towards the board, chairman. So, we presented House Bill twenty-four and twenty-six. Then I noticed that the board also has its own budget within that, within that bill. So, I'm just wondering if austerity is going to affect your budget and if maybe some of that can be transferred over to PSS?
Sure, so, the budget that we were granted is as part of the current budget law. It's really for operations, but everything is up for reduction. So, just to reassure you that not only will we obviously be part of the cost cutting, but especially myself as a chair of the board, I'm quite involved in supporting the Commissioner in some of the areas that are being reviewed to further release. So, yes, to your answer, to your question.
Thank you. Let's give a big one of applause to the, just to answer your question back here.
Hey, good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Louis Moreno. I'm a math teacher at FMS, this is my fourth year. Retired military, as you are.
And then give a big one of applause to the four-year.
Twenty-six.
No, twenty-six in service, but four years serving in PSS.
Yes, yes, those are more important. My concern is that the people of Saipan that can afford it will continue to send their children to private schools and they will thrive and they will do well. Us at PSS, I keep thinking of the loss of learning, and that's my greatest concern. And I think that our students would definitely be affected by everything that's happening, especially if you start cutting teachers to furlough. And so, you put thirty students, I've been in, I've been teaching for four years. My first year was thirty students, and that was a challenge. But I did have a teacher save, which was great. The second year, I lost the teacher save, but my numbers went down. Right now, I only have a few, much less, which is great. And I'm able to provide a better education to that amount of people. Now, if you're going to not only fill up the classes to thirty and then cut the hours, okay? The loss of learning is definitely gonna happen. And they will not be. going to happen. And they will not be able to compete in the community. So, there'll be a great divide between the better off and the not-so-better off. And that should be a great concern if you truly are concerned about the scene in my community.
Thank you. But that, on the involvement of the classroom size and ratio between teacher and students, it is, you know, you went up to thirties. The board provides me the opportunity to go up to twenty-five, and by exception, make it to thirty, but no more. So, we are very concerned about that as well, and will be obviously taking your concerns to the point where this discussion is going to occur at the board level, even if it's at the Democratic Committee, to ensure that we're taking the material point about the laws of learning. But yeah, when it comes to then rightsizing and all that, we're gonna be making sure that it doesn't come to the point to where, as mentioned by John earlier, there's gonna be the fatigue and the, you know, burnout that will occur, because that's not what we want. And I think that's the reason why the board gave that policy, or put that policy in place, where they limit the size, so that folks like myself or folks who are involved increasing or decreasing the size or classroom space to that teacher or the instructor is not to the detriment again to where, oh, we can just, you know, squeeze everybody as much as we can because of that fact that the burnout, just even the student learning and the quality of education, as we all know, is an educator's right. We love it when we have a lot of students, but not to the point where, you know, it becomes under control and we're not giving proper attention to the individual students in our class because of that size, right? So, we're very well aware, and thank you for that. And quite well taken.
Commissioner, I do have something from...
You have a question, Lila?
From Lila.
You can ask me that every day.
Yeah. We have from Andrew John Song Song. Hi, for utility purpose, why not set a energy standard for all air conditioning to be at seventy-three degrees? Anything under seventy-three or seventy-two introduces mold. I see some offices that are set at unachievable sixty-two degrees, which causes the aircon to work harder. Also, why not appoint those with management level positions to shoulder multiple hats? Meaning, can perform admin work, make up for terrible tasks, be a leader and not a boss, pointing, "Yay, do this or do that." If you can assign admin to expand the ideas of work-related responsibilities, you should be okay with adjusting.
Okay, thank you for that question, Mr. Song Song.
You're welcome, sir.
You know, truly, yes, of course, within having this discussion, our costly management, even at the school level as well. So, quite well taken. And thank you. Yes? Give you a big round of applause, Mr. Song Song.
Evening, everyone. My name is John Rages, and I'm here with my classmates from the Masters in Public Administration cohort offered by UOG. So, I just have a question.
Jumbo teachers at class.
Of course, my teacher is the commissioner.
And it says one class. What class is it?
Public budgeting.
Public budgeting. Very experienced.
My question for you from a public policy standpoint, we all know about the Article fifteen of the Constitution that guarantees twenty-five percent to the public system, uh, public school system. And we're all aware of the constant debate that's going on between the board, PSS, and legislators.
Really, there's a debate, huh?
So, I just kind of want to know, want to see where you think it's gonna be. Are we gonna see the same debate happening next year? Is there gonna be a change in the law? What do you believe is gonna be happening to that?
Yeah, whatever the board decides and with me, they're going to then empower me to do what needs to be done when it comes to that side of things. But I would allow an opportunity for our board chair as well, because last night during our PAC meeting, he had a statement to make, an encouraging statement to make to the PAC members of the council. And I'm in full support of, obviously, being right there alongside that, that part of the conversation and initiative.
Hi, Mr. Rages. Thank you for your question. Yes, so, this is my first year on the board. And from what I've gathered, you know, over the years prior to my serving, there'd always been collaborative effort between the administration and the previous boards, together with the commissioners at the time, to come to a, you know, an agreement on what PSS was willing to accept at that year. This year, there are many challenges facing us, and the twenty-five percent issue has again reared its head. And I do want to say that the board and in our meetings and our deliberations, we are very resolute, I guess, if we can say that, that we're committed to fulfilling our fiduciary duty in ensuring that the administration, the executive branch, and the legislative branch, we're closely with them to ensure that the funds that are ultimately appropriated reach that level, twenty-five percent, the current budget act that was passed and enacted does not meet that threshold. And so, we're watching very closely what's gonna happen with this revised budget bill. And at the same time, I do want to take this opportunity to, as I did last night, with the forming of the current year's parent advisory council, which, by the way, for those of you who don't know, the parent advisory council consists of members from every PTSA across all of our schools. But at the meeting last night and tonight, I will also emphasize again that there is currently a bill in the legislature to define what exactly general revenues means within the Constitution, and that's also been a debate that's gone on for quite some time. So, I would encourage everyone to reach out to your representative to find out more about their intention with that bill. But as far as the board is concerned, we're very clear on what the Supreme Court decided in their slip opinion, and that was general revenues of the state buy, or those prior to earmarks and other diversions of funding and debt service. So, really, forty-five percent of the gross appropriated months. I don't know if I answered your question.
Well, yeah.
Thank you. In line with that, tomorrow is the legislature's opportunity to discuss, I guess, in public, that bill to define what general revenue is, really kind of ties into then the twenty-five percent that the Constitution affords PSS with. And I'll be making a statement, making sure that board members will be there to also make their own statements. But certainly, my point when we do talk tomorrow is gonna be, but there's this law that we're really executing that supposedly has defined it, but not to the definition that we think the Constitution defines it to be. And that's a problem. But now we're trying to kind of work our way to correct that, right? So, we'll discuss that tomorrow and make sure that it is. But I'm not gonna get into that. They have a tough job right now, and so do we. But at this point in time, my intentions and our intention for this town hall meeting is to present to the community the current budget law that we have to operate with. It's an appropriation with stipulations and reporting to this community saying that this is how we're planning on implementing it. And hopefully the board empowers me to execute, beginning at least with the sturdy measures on the first of November. And if there's a revised budget, we'll come back to the board and give them an opportunity to understand the adjustments that we're making, and the other project based on the revised central government project. And hopefully the legislature will conform to them and we'll work together to change things. But for right now, we have a plan. Okay, so, do you have another? Yes, sir?
Good evening, everyone.
Sorry, sir. Can we give John Rages a big round of applause? Asking a very important question. Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Oliver Segal, Mariana High School, special education teacher aide. I'd just like to just keep clarification. Should the worst-case scenario happen and furloughs need to go through, would special education teacher aides who are under local funds be also furloughed?
We're gonna do our best to protect you, special ed teacher aides that are helping or... Can we give a big round of applause? If you could just only imagine and be there to see how well these folks at the special education program really are caring for, you know, disabled students, you would really feel the, you know, the really nice protection that's happening. So, can we give a big round of applause? And I know this is bad because we, you know, came here to a working last year for being the top teacher aide for the state. So, thank you for your service. But did I answer your question?
Not exactly, but I just wanted to get clarification because the last town hall meeting we had, there was several questions you answered saying that, oh, some students might need to work without teacher aide. And then it was a back and forth between, you know, like, oh, the teachers are not gonna be affected, that kind of stuff. And you did say you were gonna talk with Ms. Donna about how it would affect special education as a whole. So, I just want to get clarification because it will give me anxiety if I'm not certain of how, when we get to that point that I'm gonna have to anticipate that, oh, I might get furloughed. Ms. Mel, no more feelings if you didn't do that. I'm totally caught.
Because you know why he said that? Because he heard that I said we were gonna sit down with the principals to discuss this matter, right? And an individual basis. So, but thank you for your questions and know that we're doing everything we can to protect at least the folks that serve our disabled students.
And I just also would like to add on that, just to make sure that we've all been there, especially where we had to work with, like, short staff. And I totally understand about that. And I just want to ensure that there is no, like, ambiguity in regards to how it will affect us, as teacher aides, as well as how it's going to hurt special ed staff should there be any concerns regarding, even if it might negatively affect our special needs kids who specifically need that one-to-one support. You know, I'm just, like, trying to put it out there so that way everyone is on the same page that if the worst-case scenario happens and furloughs need to go through and we do need to reduce staff at our own level, that it will affect our vulnerable student. And I hope that we do not have to get to a point where PSS might need to be compelled by lawsuits, by our apparent stakeholders or, or, because actually lawsuit issue. So, I just wanted to put that out there for everyone who will be here, because it was probably a question that probably no one was either thinking about or maybe is bored in.
Sir, I also would like to respond to your question. And that is to let you know that I personally view sped aides as essential employees. So, whatever the commissioner decides with this team, just know that I will be knocking on his door, ensuring that I know what their plan is and that you have my personal support. It's not very visible, a lot of the work that some of the board members do out in our community, but I do want to assure you that I've been very aware of various sped issues at some of our schools. And the commissioner can certainly attest to my assertiveness as far as some of the challenges that I've encountered, as far as access and support for our students in special education, and what I do know are very critical services that the sped team provides, and particularly sped aides. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. And you're absolutely right. Donna and I have had this conversation, and she's advised so well to the point where that would be not one of the first things we do. So, rest assured on that. Thank you. Any others?
I will be Michelle Tyuska, online. If worst-case scenario happens, when will these measures be expected to take effect?
On the first of November is when we would implement the beginning of our sturdy measures. And our plan of the thirty-one point seven remains the same until the revised budget is in place and decided to law. And then the board empowers me to utilize a different, an adjusted budget. But for right now, that's what we know.
I will now be Jesse Tidella.
Can we give a big round of applause to all those folks who are asking questions?
Just a recommendation for school maintenance costs is have contractors adopt the school to do maintenance labor up to five thousand as tax write-off or get it taxed credit.
That's an awesome recommendation. We will certainly mark that down as one of our biggest suggestions. So, Michelle, to a lot of them, because that's, I think, the biggest activity right now that's going on. If you can imagine anything, this construction, right? So, yes, thank you so much for that, Mr. Rages.
Now I will be Maria Tikai.
I keep changing on me.
If a differential pay will be utilized for Mondays, will there be a differential pay for holidays?
No.
Holiday pays holiday pay, right?
And oh, by the way, the officer group transportation, and we make, we're gonna recommend to the board, their pay is gonna remain as locally funded pay and not pay differential because we understand this, I tend to say ten thousand dollar difference, but we can afford to keep them at their rate and not lower than what they're making right now. Holidays are paid.
And then I...
Yeah, holidays are paid for sure. I think I saw that already. Yes, holidays are paid the way they are supposed to be paid.
I will be back to Michelle Tyuska. In the first presentation, you guys mentioned that we can still run as is with the forty million. But according to your new slides, forty million is with a reduction of hours and furloughs across the board. What changed?
No, the forty million is reduction in hours with furlough at central office. Not just, what has changed is the stipulation in the budget bill. We had a plan going in when we expected a thirty-one point seven million dollar budget that was on the table that we followed above, because we submitted a forty-nine million dollar budget. The central government submitted forty for us to the legislature. And we were then given the, we were communicated, there was a communication that also informed us that we might get down to as far as thirty-one point seven. So, we came up with a plan, went around and introduced that plan to the community during our first round of town hall meetings. But things have changed because there are stipulations now that we're having to make adjustments with. And that's what I presented this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Because it is a law. We have to follow that law.
From Maria Mendosa, hopefully this austerity is not another long-term salary reduction. Just wanted to share. Candy Alexis, furlough should be based on performance evaluation just like at the local government. Please see the austerity memo.
Thank you for all of that. We will definitely heed to all those suggestions in the comments.
And we do have from BMS and Sanzenty Elementary School, PTA. Is PSS working alongside WE or Department of Labor for folks possibly going through these furloughs? I think it's imperative to get a plan in place before this possible furlough.
I think it's imperative to get a plan in place before these possible furloughs happen, rather than when it does happen.
Very good point, and yes, we will be communicating with them, but um again, and so we have a plan. And I've not been empowered to execute that plan yet until next week, when we get the board to meet uh and tell me to do so, but in the, in the meantime, we can start communicating with the other agencies.
And the last one is just to include in our plans for support the DCCA for childcare. For those that might possibly want furlough.
Okay, and, and to that comment, uh Ms. Lila is really taking notes, because she will work on making sure that that works for us as well. So thank you for all of that. Okay, thank you so much, it's been a great uh opportunity to come and present to you all what we have in terms of our budget and where we are and where we're going with it. And if things change again to uh the benefit of increasing our budget, that would be wonderful, but in the meantime, this is important, that we become transparent on what we currently have in front of us, how we're gonna work with it. Uh because it is different than in the past and we wanna make sure that the community understands that change and the adjustment to that, so there's no surprises. That's really the whole intention behind all of this, is to be just upfront and say, we understand too the overall economic condition of our, our islands here in the CMI and that we're very considerate to that as well. But nothing is gonna stop us from being real with the community on what we currently have and how we're gonna work with it. That's the gist of all of this so far. Thank you so much and uh please all and believing, drive home safely, unless there's anything else, just be careful.